Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order for the City Council for the City of Yuba City. First up on the agenda is road call. Terrell?
Mayor Gill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Maun?
Here.
Councilmember Starkey?
If you'd please rise for the invocation and Councilmember Buckland is gonna give the invocation followed by the pledge allegiance by Vice Mayor Dukes.
If you'll bow your heads with me as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of those gathered here today. Thank you for this day and the plentiful blessings you provide each of us. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities in your name. I pray for guidance in tonight's meeting. Please give us an assurance what would please you and what would benefit those that live and work in Yuba City. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing up for on our agenda is presentations, proclamations. And tonight we're honored to give a proclamation to Jim Frost for his retirement from Public Works Department. Jim, if you can come up to the front. It's a proclamation. Congratulations to custodial supervisor Jim Frost on his retirement from Public Works Department. Jim Frost began his career with City of Yuba City twenty-four years ago. He has held positions of custodian one, lead custodian, and most recently custodial supervisor. Jim's knowledge and experience in maintaining our city's buildings and facilities proved to be invaluable, and he could always be counted on to share that knowledge with his fellow employees. Jim was always willing to respond and to assist staff with any situation or task that arise twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five days in a year. Jim Frost has always been conscientious, dedicated, and a loyal employee, and he has earned the respect of employees and citizens alike. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Cash Gill, Mayor of City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Jim Frost for his retirement from Public Works Department. Jim, thank you very much and everything that you've done for us. Okay, public communication. You are welcome. Encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited in large groups or encouraged select representative to express the opinion of the group. Number two is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting will normally be allotted five minutes to speak. Terrell, do we have any written requests?
No requests were received.
Okay. Item number three is appearance of interest citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. We do have a speaker's card from Pat Miller. Pat?
Back on September eleventh, Cindy T. B. and Gregor E. Mail with a commentary story about the City of Costa Mesa passing an ordinance requiring public closure of traditionally closed labor negotiations. Civic openness negotiations. The ordinance allows the public to see and comment on formal proposals. The story indicated that the open negotiation had saved the city's public face one million dollars. I give the city having a point ordinance in effect prior to the city's action increasing now in thirty-two thousand. The city might not owe account for five million if owed as of thirty-two. I have here this evening to encourage the council to pass a point ordinance to prevent spending in negotiations. Public, they use the salaries of city employees to have an opportunity to weigh in on what the unions are proposing and what the city is proposing prior to the council voting on them. I printed copies of that commentary for you. I'll give them to Terrell and in a point ordinance to make the City of Yuba City's negotiations disempowered.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is item number four is public hearing, energy services contract with Optera Energy Services for energy-related improvement for city facilities. Diane?
Good evening. Back in August, we brought before you the results of a analysis that Chevron at the time, now Optera, had done of city facilities for energy efficiency improvements. The scope of work was initially approved and staff was directed to work on financing for the project and bring forward at a later date the energy services contract with Optera and then also financing for the project. And so over the last few weeks, we've been working with Optera to finalize the scope of work and financing. And we are proposing financing through Bank of America with a tax-exempt lease purchase. Finance terms are sixteen years. Interest rate is two-point-eight-nine percent with zero cash upfront from the city. Optera is guaranteeing the savings for sixteen years, and the construction cost is just under five million dollars with an estimated savings of approximately six million dollars over the thirty-year expected life of the project. We do have a presentation very similar to what was presented in August, but at this point in time, just to keep the meeting somewhat condensed, we're proposing to not go through the presentation unless council has specific questions or would like us to go through the presentation. For tonight, what we're recommending is that council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an energy service contract with Optera Energy Services for the energy-related improvements to city facilities, and then also adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an equipment lease purchase agreement, an escrow agreement, and any ancillary documents with Bank of America for funding the associated in energy-related improvements following approval by the city attorney. One thing that I would like to note is the resolution related to the execution of the lease purchase agreement notes that the cost is not to exceed four million nine-hundred-sixty-seven thousand two-hundred-fourteen dollars. That's the construction cost. We will have some capitalized interest during the construction period, and so our financial advisor recommended that we increase that to an amount not to exceed five million seventy-six thousand dollars. And that's the construction cost plus the estimated capitalized interest during the nine-month construction period.
Questions for Diana?
To the mayor?
Yes.
Some of the other proposals or the initial proposal had us participating in this program. At this point, we are not participating at all.
Yeah, there's there's zero cash contribution from the city. We were able to go back. We refined the scope of work to remove the oxygen generation equipment from Fire Station One that didn't result in energy savings. Also, since that time, they went through and were able to get additional savings related to the lighting retrofits. And with the the financial proposal from Bank of America, the two-point-eight-nine percent, it was a very favorable financing proposal.
Thank you for your hard work on this. I know that you you worked.
It has been truly a group effort. Robin's been extremely helpful through this process. The Optera staff, everybody's been really helpful.
That's good, because I know some of the other jurisdictions around are paying to have this done, and you were able to get it to a position where we didn't have to put any money in at all, which is good.
Ashu with Optera spent a lot of time soliciting proposals and refining those proposals and coming back with multiple proposals. So he really put a lot of hours into to getting the city the best offer.
Very good. Thank you.
And just another point for clarification, like it was mentioned earlier of Vice Mayor, some of the LED lighting that was done around neighborhoods, the savings that we're getting was credited for that work that was already done.
I'm not understanding the question.
Earlier, earlier in the year, I think it was what this year or last year, we start went around and started changing some of the lights around the city. Went to a LED lighting, which is gonna save money for the cities overall.
Right.
So when we're doing this project, this that's already taken into consideration.
Yes, the street, the lighting that we're retrofitting through this project is related to facilities and parks. So it's city hall parking lots, city hall interior lights, external lights. The lights located in parks, those were not addressed through our LED retrofit project that we did a year or so ago.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. It's a pleasure of the council if I can have a motion.
I will move for approval of the item.
Uh, we need public hearing, okay.
I will withdraw that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item may do so. Okay, now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring them back to the council for their recommendation.
All right, I'll move the the motion.
Okay, got a motion?
Second that.
Second.
Again, I'm interrupting with the change as recommended by Diana with respect to the dollar amount?
Yes.
To the five-point.
Right.
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second and all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is ordinances. Item number five, ordinance prohibiting camping on private property with city limits of Yuba City. Mr. Darren Gill. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Gill and council members. This evening, I'm here before you to speak regarding an ordinance revision as relates to prohibiting camping on a private property. In early of this year in January, the city began a clean and safe effort. As part of that effort, we've cleaned up shopping carts throughout the city and have a program to retrieve them on a regular basis, which has been very successful. And in March, the council adopted an updated camping ordinance which didn't, which prohibited camping on on public property, on rideaways in parks. Since the time that that ordinance has been adopted, one of the issues that our law enforcement officers have found is that it's very difficult to remove vagrants on private property. For example, there's a property in our downtown core where the officers go to regularly, and the people say, well, we have permission from the property owner to stay here. In order for the officers to actually ask them to move, they need to make contact with the property owner in the middle of the night, and in doing that is is very difficult. And so in an effort to be pro-business and proactive and to continue our clean and safe effort, we're proposing a change or an amendment to that ordinance, which will now include no camping on private property. And and the change in the ordinance is, there's not much. The the purpose changed in the ordinance from from March to include private property. And then there's one statement in there that that reads that a person must have expressed written permission to be camping on private property. And if and if not, they can be cited for illegally camping on a private property. That's the ordinance. There are a couple, one other change that was put in here. The, we met with the homeless consortium, and they asked that one word or shouldn't say one word. It's actually three words in the ordinance be removed, which talked about in in an emergency for the council to adopt a resolution to allow a camping on public or private property. They're working and would like to see something happen in the future. They felt that the ordinance stating in an emergency for the council to be able to allow camping did not fit. They've been very supportive of all the ordinance, including our anti-aggressive panhandling ordinance, and so that change has been made. I can answer any questions that you might have. Would ask that you conduct a public hearing and introduce the respite ordinance and waive the first reading.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gill?
To the mayor?
Yes.
So if I want to have my son or grandson camp out in the backyard, this doesn't affect them?
It does not affect them.
It's just other people camping on private property?
Correct. There's also a provision in here that was adopted in March that allows your community services director, your parks and rec director, to allow camping in parks, for example, in the river bottoms if a if a scout troop wanted to have a camp out there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Darren? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item can do so by going to the podium and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that there is no mad rush to the podium, I'm gonna go and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for their recommendation.
For the mayor?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Maun.
Second.
Got a second by Councilmember Buckland. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar considered to be routine can be acted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of City Council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Anyone from the council wishes to have anything discussed separately?
I need to have item number seven removed.
To discuss separately?
No, not to discuss, just I.
Are you really gonna abstain from that?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody from the public? So let's go ahead and vote on item numbers six and eight. Second. Okay, all all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now is item number seven.
I'll move for approval of item number seven on the consent calendar.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Extinction? Okay, got one extension. Item number nine is general items. Feather River Parkway Phase Two addendum to revised initial study and mitigated negative declaration. Diana?
Hello again. As part of the Feather River Parkway Phase Two project, we are proposing to include a concrete vault-type bathroom in the facility to be located near the parking lot. The reason for the concrete vault-type bathroom is number one, we don't have access to sewer services there. So it has to be a vault type so that you can store sewage on site and then remove it on a routine basis and then prior to any high-water events, and then concrete so that it's not flammable within that area. When we initially did the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the project, we did not include the construction of a bathroom facility in the park. And so the item before you tonight is to adopt an addendum to the revised initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the project to include consideration for the bathroom being placed. The anticipated cost for the bathroom is approximately forty thousand dollars. The total estimated project cost is one point, roughly eight-five million dollars, of which we have a one-point-seven-four million dollar Proposition Eighty-four grant to fund the project, and then one-hundred-six thousand dollars in park development impact fees as the matching funds for the grant. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Diana?
The restroom facility, will that be closed down at night? How will it be monitored for people trying to sleep in there overnight?
Right, so thanks to Mr. McIntyre. He provided some notes on this earlier today for me. So the maintenance schedule will coincide with the daily maintenance of the park in the morning where staff opens the gates into the park, and then the bathroom will be checked and closed at night before the gates are closed for access to the park. So it'll be locked overnight, so you cannot physically access the bathroom.
Okay, are there questions? Okay. What's your recommendation of staff or the council members?
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion? Second. Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number ten is first level manager's letter of understanding. Natalie?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Okay, sorry, organizational issues here for me. Tonight I am presenting the first level manager's letter of understanding. I'm pleased to be here doing this this evening. I know. Okay, so let's get started here. The first thing, I'd just like to briefly go over some facts that you're well aware of. We've covered these for the other agreements I've brought before you, but I always think they're good to point out. This agreement, excuse me, expired June thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The ten percent furlough program has been in place for three years. A five percent furlough program was in place for two years, or did I say five years? Five years total, three years for the ten percent, two years for the five percent. I think I got that right. Two thousand and fourteen is the sixth year without a wage adjustment for these employees. And as we know, the city costs just continue to grow. We have increased costs in healthcare, workers' comp, and also pension obligations, as you're well aware of. The first level manager LOU, these are the agreement terms. It's a two-year agreement, little less than a two-year agreement, but it does at this point, because we're in November of two thousand and fourteen, but it does expire June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. It transitions out the ten percent furlough program and also transitions in employee contributions towards their retirement. There are two additional floating holidays, and it also includes a one-time non-perceval distribution of a thousand dollars. One area here of concessions from the first level management group was transitioning and employees paying twenty percent. Instead of employees paying twenty percent of the medical premium increase, they'll start paying twenty percent of the total medical premium. These terms are consistent with our other, with some of our other agreements. The fiscal impact for fiscal year fourteen, fifteenth, what requires a supplemental appropriation is thirty-two thousand six hundred, and for fifteen sixteen at sixty-four thousand two hundred. At this time, I'd just like to recognize the first level managers in attendance here tonight who were at the bargaining table. Scott, Ann, and Brian worked hard with the city on this agreement, and I'd just like to take a moment to just point them out. We have two here and then Scott over here. They do a lot for the city, and we're pleased that we were able to reach agreement with them. At this time, I would recommend adopting a resolution approving a two-year letter of understanding with the first level manager group and approving the supplemental appropriation as I previously discussed. I would take any questions that you may have.
Questions for Natalie? Hi, Natalie, I want to say thank you to yourself as well as to the managers. I know that the last few years have been very, very tough, not only yourselves but on the city itself. And, you know, as as we try to charter ourselves out of these tough waters, I mean, we've all faced some very, very tough times as far as finances are concerned. But we appreciate your guys' patience and everything that you guys have done. So we do appreciate that. Okay, with that, I can get a motion? Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven for business from the City Council, ad hoc committee recommendations regarding business incentives and Lloyd Wise Company Nissan dealership. Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Mayor Gill and council members again. It's my pleasure to be here to talk and give a report regarding the ad hoc committee that was set up from your August twenty-sixth meeting, I believe, regarding a business incentive from the Nissan new car dealership that's located on Bridge Street. As a little background, the City Council did adopt business incentives back in early two thousand and eleven. And in those incentives, it talked about a variety of different incentives from impact fee deferrals, waiving, or of incentives to pay back impact fees over amount of time, water and sewer connections, but all of them had to do with new developments within our community or large job creation. And on the twenty-sixth, Nissan did come and write a letter asking for support for three hundred, on average, I'll just round the number, three hundred thousand. And the council asked the ad hoc committee to do some research on on business incentives specifically for car dealerships. As we looked at car dealers, we found that Madera, Woodland, Vacaville, Calusa, Woodland, Davis, and Chico are all, sorry, I misspoke there, Buckland, I should say, Amera Cash Gill and Vice Mayor John Dukes.
We look very similar.
You guys do look very similar.
And we do have the same middle name.
Well, let's go to the next one. But they did not provide any incentives for their car dealers. We tried to look at regional car dealerships that had provide incentives. In short, providing incentives to a new car dealership to locate to a region is rare. Some of them that have occurred, Elk Grove has done a variety of them. It was mainly to push their new large auto mall that's right along Highway ninety-nine. One, they provided five hundred thousand over three years to incentivize Ford to move from their current location that was on the east side of ninety-nine. Another one was for Mazda, who was located out of a temporary trailer. It was considering maybe looking at other facilities in the region. They gave them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a couple of years, and they also did a shop about local program. Folsom waived planning and building fees, but it was based upon a new seven-million-dollar rehabilitation to the to the Folsom Auto Mall the where, I think it was Folsom Imports and Chevy used to be right there off of Highway fifty. Sacramento County did use RDA funds to assist with the public improvements for what they're calling their new auto mall along Auburn and eighty, as they had a lot of dealerships move away. Roseville provided redevelopment assistance to to re, to first, to to build the auto mall, and second, to do a facelift on the auto mall. But obviously redevelopment dollars are not around. As part of our effort, we did meet with the local car dealers, and it became very clear that no incentive has been provided to them, and each one of them have made significant improvements to their facilities over the last seven years. From Wheeler Chevrolet built a brand-new facility. John L. Sullivan built a new facility, which we could not provide incentives to based upon state law because they were relocating. IKEA built a new facility, and they're the same wage John L. Sullivan. Ford is doing a one-point-five-million-dollar improvement currently, and Dow Lewis has has done some improvements. And then most recently Toyota, which I believe will have their ribbon cutting next Friday, they've made significant improvements. And although we did not provide business incentives, I don't believe that's a, I do believe the city has been very business-friendly. We've moved their projects forward. We've helped them throughout the process, and we've done our best to minimize the fees that that they would have to pay for the impacts that their facilities had on on our community. And finally, as the ad hoc committee met, it be, it became quite clear that the dealers were very interested in starting a new car dealer association of looking for ways to help market the Yuba Sutter region as a, as an auto mall. As we have these new dealerships here in Yuba City, that they might be able to do some joint marketing efforts. And one of the recommendations is at a future meeting, after they've begun their new car dealership, that they come back and that the council consider funding them or helping provide matching dollars at a future time. Another one of their comments was having the Economic Development Commission review the current economic economic incentives and suggest any improvements that might be made to help us improve as we as we consider incentives for for future business. Right now, they are very broad, which I think provide a staff and the council a broad spectrum of incentives and a broad ability to work with businesses on a case-by-case basis. But as we looked with other communities, they're very prescriptive. But at the same time, I think that makes it very difficult for cities in considering a variety of different incentives. So those are the three things of not providing incentives to Nissan at this time, to consider financial support at a future time for a new car dealer association, and three, have the Economic Development Commission to review and provide, provide suggestions to our business incentive program if needed. I can answer any questions that you might have on the ad hoc committee's recommendation or any other questions about incentives for new car dealerships.
Any questions for Mr. Gill, myself, or the Vice Mayor? One of the things that we did ask while we were on the committee, so we get a good feel for it, was didn't know quite how long Toyota's lease was. So we wanted to get a copy of their lease agreement.
Nissan.
Nissan, I'm sorry. We did ask Nissan to send that lease agreement directly to our city attorney for confidentiality reason why, you know, for purposes. And they refused to send that out, so that made the decision even a little bit clearer as far as what direction we needed to do. And I think our direction here was to not proceed with the recommendation of tax incentives at this point in time.
Well, I think also, when we did have our meeting with the new car dealers, it in talking about in the future, looking at some type of funding mechanism or rebate from the city on sales takes back for for a new car association for for marketing and advertising, then it makes sense, because then as the city, we're not choosing winners and losers. But it's applying to all of the the businesses equally. And I also feel that taking this back to the Economic Development Commission to let them look at this and look at ideas, I think that's something that we should do before any type of decision.
Right. I think after talking with all the car dealers that were there, I think it became very clear, just like you've mentioned is, you know, Toyota built their whole facility. We didn't give them any kind of incentives. Wheeler went and redid the whole remodel, millions of dollars, nothing there. Ford's doing their remodel right now, nothing, no incentives there, even when the city took water. Uh, even when the city took water and sewer system out to um Lewis Motors, again, no incentives, no tax breaks there. So it became very, very apparent, it's kind of hard to give away public funds for private use. And uh, you know, you've gotta, we've gotta go through the process and make sure that the process is followed fairly, and like we said, we're gonna do the process, follow the process, and then come back with the recommendations, and that's what our goal here is, is recommendations. Uh, we do have uh an individual, uh Doctor Ozren, who wishes to speak on this item. Doctor Ozren, if you can go to the podium, state your name and address, we'd really appreciate it.
Uh, Mayor Gale, members of the council, thank you for your time this evening. Um, I want to start by applauding the uh ad hoc committee. Um, I fully support um the direction of the report. Um, and I appreciate the outcome, and I can only agree with Councilman Dukes and Mayor Gale in terms of their most recent comments this evening. I wanted to add um two suggestions for next steps as we continue to move the community toward um this path of better prosperity. When you send this to the Economic Development Commission for assessment, um I would ask that you ask them to look at what communities have implemented incentives and then stopped giving incentives. Because what I'd like the commission to consider in their evaluation is whether we should not do incentives of this sort at all. Um, I don't think that these kinds of incentives, as you both suggested, are really helpful, and if we can get to the point where the city doesn't offer them, I think that ultimately would actually be better for the city, um preserve resources. There's the concept of disproportionate value. The hundred thousand dollars a year to a company that's earning ten million dollars in revenues is worth very little compared to a city losing potentially a police officer for a hundred thousand dollars. There's a disproportionate benefit that's in that calculation that I would like the commission to consider. Um, the second piece that I'd like the commission to consider is the flexibility concept. And I know Darren was talking about the potential advantages of flexibility, but in fact, I think that flexibility is a danger. It allows you to be um influenced by special interests. Um, it allows you to give one company a benefit that you don't then give to the same company in similar circumstances, and I think that that's the reason why the communities that do have incentives have very prescriptive incentives. Um, again, as both of you recognize that there's a danger that will give incentives to some businesses and potentially hurt other businesses, particularly the businesses that are already here. Because the businesses that are already here still generate more than eighty percent of new jobs. So those are the two things that I would ask that you pass on to the commission, and I really appreciate um the efforts of the subcommittee. And I thank you for moving our committee um down this new path to prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Ozren. Any other comments, questions for Darren?
Would you like me to respond to any of the comments at all?
Sure.
So I think uh one of the things is uh the city of Yuba City is a city fifty, fifty minutes north of Sacramento and Roseville. I think one of the things that does make us uh such a competitive market is that we have a staff that's willing to work with businesses and we can get projects quick. Uh Kingsbury, for example, that came in. Uh, the project that we're working on right now at the Twin Rivers Academy are two great quality projects, which I, I think help define what a great community we are relates to being a business-friendly community that can get things done. I do believe as, as, as we look to attract new employers or some large retailers, that in- incentives being on on the books help us uh throughout that effort. And as relates to being prescriptive or broad, it's very difficult to, to, to write an ordinance or to write um policies, in my opinion, that fits for everyone. Uh, we don't know what businesses uh will be coming, but we want to make sure that when they do come, that we have a, a, an open way of, of, of encouraging them to come here, especially those large employers. Um, our, our broad ordinance that allows us to work with them in, in providing sewer and water, I think is exactly what a city like Yuba City needs. Now, we're at a disadvantage that we're not on an interstate, but we're at a, an advantage that we have the right staff and we have the right ordinances to help us get, you know, hopefully across the finish line and attract them. Those come through very few, uh and far between to see some of those large employers, but I think the city has, has created a good foundation and a toolbox for uh staff to work with.
One other uh comment, uh is this moves forward to the Economic uh Development Commission. Um, I would recommend also that they look at, we, we talk a lot about the leakage out of the community. Um, and not much has been talked about as far as the leakage into the community. Because there's a lot of people that come from surrounding communities that buy cars here that don't live here too, so um, i- it's, it's real easy to talk about all the ones that are not being sold here and people are doing elsewhere, but it would be interesting also to look at the numbers of vehicles that are purchased locally from people outside our area where we benefit from the sales tax.
The number's about twenty percent.
Twenty percent. So we add that to the, the fifty percent, we're close to seventy percent then. I mean.
And the biggest brand loyalty out of all the dealership is with GMC and Dow Lewis Motors. They're about seven percentage points higher than all the other dealerships. But that's like great information that, that we'll review and, and something that we can review on a regular basis to um to, to hopefully help attract people from outside the region to buy cars here.
Thank you, Darren. I think this is just for discussion and recommendations. I don't think we need to vote on it. Okay, uh, item number twelve, the city council reports, Councilmember Buckland. Big day for you today.
It's a big day. Um, we call this the make it or break it day. So we'll, my feet are uh, they're pleased that the fourth is here. Um, all I can tell you is I have a, a, a new appreciation for a good doorbell. Many doorbells on, on our houses that are just merely five, six, seven years old, all the plastic is worn away uh from the doorbell.
This is to shock all the people that are knocking on the door asking for the vote.
Yeah, and, and that, I mean, I thought it was just they were wearing out, then I realized it was just to keep us away, so. Um, and, and so I do have a new appreciation for, for people's efforts to keep people from ringing their doorbell. Um, we did uh, we had a meeting with, with Caltrans and, and I don't want to go too much uh or too far into this and, and allow the mayor to all suspect of it. Um, our staff uh from Public Works, city manager, uh the mayor and myself, we're able to meet with the new uh, uh district uh chief of Caltrans, District Three Chief, um Mister Benapal, and we had a great one-hour discussion um over in, in uh their new building. Well, it's really not new, but it fairly new. Um, talking about our gateway coming into Yuba City, what we can do to improve uh the Highway twenty corridor and, and just some fairly quick and easy fixes to that corridor. This is Caltrans property, it's their right of way. Um, but maybe some partnerships that we can engage in uh to improve uh just what the overall appearance of Yuba City is from the medians and, and other treatments that we can do. Uh, again, to be a little bit more attractive on that corridor itself. Talked a little bit about Third Bridge right of way and what the intentions of the state are uh with that right of way down at, at Bog Road, what the alternatives are. So that continues to be uh on Caltrans's plate to, um, I hate to break it to everybody, but they're likely going to put that uh on that, on that plate of getting rid of it someday. They're going to try to slow move that and allow for, for more planning to occur. Uh, also had discussions a little bit about what our intentions are with the Fifth Street Bridge, uh how we want to move traffic through uh from Marysville through that corridor, opening up the Bridge Street corridor, all corridor all the way out to Highway ninety-nine and Bridge. Um, and then also multilining the area between basically Bog Road and Highway twenty to allow for better traffic flow and, and what that will look like and what can be done to, to uh increase that to six lanes, three in each direction. Uh, that would allow for a little bit better travel times through Yuba City and not stagnate as much traffic on it, on the Highway ninety-nine corridor. And then briefly, we discussed uh with the Highway ninety-nine, twenty interchange may look like in the future. Uh, we were given some opportunities while we were there, uh or Diana was given some opportunities while we were there um for some grant uh applications, so we can start some of our planning processes uh with Caltrans and, and that was a short window on that. Um, but we look forward to a good and fruitful relationship with Caltrans uh into the future. And then uh just yesterday, I was down in Sacramento for Secog uh group meeting and, which is our government uh relations and, and uh our personnel uh committee. We're currently updating the metro, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and there's still two meetings to go. We'll have all of that information back together, um and the updates will start coming out as, as to what um, the MTP will, will look like. Uh, we're required to update it every four years. And, and that information will become a public document here shortly or within the next year. Also talking a little bit about cap and trade, um the money coming out of cap and trade will be going into transportation um into public transportation modes. The first year of cap and trade dollars will probably be fairly minimal. It won't be a lot of money to, to be able to be pulled back into uh regional distribution, uh but we're looking and negotiating our, our CEO down there at Secog. Uh Mister McKeever uh has been negotiating a crossover at the capital for how we can get some of that cap and trade money back uh into our region, what that money will look like. Uh, so if they're gonna take it, uh we might as well get as much of it for our region as we possibly can, and that's what the efforts are at this point. Um, but other than that, it's been a slow week. Appreciate it, um, and, and hopefully this meeting gets over with shortly and I can go home and maybe go to sleep. Find out in the morning who won.
Councilmember Ramon.
Well, we'll keep this meeting short. I'll make no comments.
Oh, wow, wow, that is short.
Vice Mayor Dukes?
Couple things, um, last Friday, we had the, or the last Friday, the week before, lose track of time here, we had the mayor's cup football game. Yuba City was successful over River Valley. And I was there to present the trophy and behe- on behalf of the mayor. Went to ribbon cutting for Crushley Homes uh up uh north of Stabler. They're uh starting to build more homes in our community. And then on, let's see, guess it was Sunday, we had the uh party with the Japanese delegation here from Toray. And they all came dressed in their uh Halloween costumes, some interesting ones. Mister Clean was there, yes, and I think it was a hippie or something from, from the seventies that showed up also. But uh, and then tomorrow morning, the delegation will be leaving and heading back to San Francisco, so if you want to come out at seven o'clock tomorrow morning and say farewell to them, they'll be leaving, so that's all I have.
Great, uh, I also attended the Caltrans meeting and I won't go into detail, but you covered pretty much everything there. It was a great meeting. Uh, visiting with our new district director who's a good personal friend, so that kind of helps out quite a bit. He's, family's from the area. Uh, he's got a passion for this community, but like you said, he's got a, a short list of stuff that he can get done right away. Uh, and then other stuff that's gonna take a little bit longer, uh the interchanges and stuff, especially Pease Road interchange, we did talk about that. We did talk about the interchanges here at Highway twenty, Highway ninety-nine. We did talk about six lanes on Highway ninety-nine, so a lot of great stuff. I was also able to attend the Mong Festival on Saturday. Uh, what a great, great festival they have over there and uh got to know the people. Again, this is the second time attending. For those of you that have not had a chance to attend the Mong Festival, I definitely encourage each and every one of you to do that. Uh, Sunday, of course, Friday, Saturday, Sunday was also the Seek Festival. And uh if you've noticed, uh at least for myself, having attended this from the very first one to the thirty-fifth, I think this is the most amount of people that we've ever seen in Yuba City. And uh there was bleachers along the highway or Bu- House Road and all the volunteers that come out from the different temples. And uh, but especially a thank you to all of our citizens who put up for it in the sense, I know this traffic gets really bad and it's hard to move around town and really, really hard, but it is a one-day event in the sense of Sunday. But uh I was at the Mong Festival and they had a judge down there from Fresno who was a keynote speaker, and he said, he goes, I wasn't spending the night, but I called every hotel in town and they were all booked. So that tells you that every hotel in town is booked, all the gas stations were busy pumping gas. Sam's Club, Walmart, all the water, sodas, because everything is donated, the flour, the lentils. I mean, you know, when you're cooking and you can go and have meals as many times as you want, not only people attending anybody there, uh that saves a lot for our community, not only is the Seek community giving, but our entire Yuba City community uh lends a hand, so thank you to them as well. Uh, we do have the delegation here from Toray, uh that came here last Thursday and they're leaving um tomorrow morning at seven o'clock. Uh, I was able to visit with few, had dinner with some of them last night, and they've enjoyed their stay. Um, I know when we went back, they really roll out the red carpet for all of us. And it's like all hands on deck. Their mayor travels with us wherever we go, their superintendent takes time out of their schools. They're on the trip with us on every one of the stops they go. Uh, so we're very, very fortunate and having gone back and having them here gives you a greater understanding of the sister city partnership that we have and the bond and the reasoning forward behind it, so we'll be looking at some changes coming across. Councilmember Buckland, I wish you all the best. Look forward to working with you uh again, and keep your fingers crossed and a good bit early. Uh, you know, I'm sure you're gonna be re-elected, no, no issues there, but we do wish you all the best. Uh, so with that, the meeting is adjourned and thank you.